We call this meeting of the Haverhill City Council to order. This meeting of the Haverhill City Council will be held in person at the location provided on this notice as its official meeting location pursuant to the open meeting law. As the meeting is held in person at a physical location that is open and accessible to the public, the city council is not required to provide remote access to the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that a live stream of the meeting is being provided only as a courtesy to the public, and the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by HCTV, The Eagle Tribune, WHAV, WCVB, NBC 10, Boston Fox 25. Any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the council president who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the mass wiretap statute. May the supreme legislator grant that we be worthy of our power and responsibility, that we deliberate and achieve with wisdom and understanding, recognizing the rights of all our citizens with full regard for the dignity and justness of the individual. Would you all please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Counselor Basilea, you had the minutes from last week's meeting. Did you have a chance to review them?
I did, Mr. President. Finding them in order, I moved for acceptance into the record.
A motion by Counselor Basilea, a second from Counselor Lewandowski. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that passes. Counselor Hobbs-Effert, would you do the honors for tonight?
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, the first item, please.
Mayor Barrett wishes to announce the appointment of Captain Wayne Tracy as acting chief of the Haverhill Police Department, effective October 10th, 2025.
Good evening, Mayor Barrett. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, counselors, and thank you. Wayne Tracy is a 21-year veteran of our police force, and he has risen up through the ranks, and he has stepped into a leadership role as our interim chief. But the truth is, he has been a steady and reassuring figure within the department for a long time. And while the last 100 days have been especially challenging for our police officers, Wayne Tracy has been a leader, providing support, stability, compassion, and calm. And I am confident that Wayne will meet the moment, as will our entire police department, as they always have. Our offices show up and serve the community daily, and they have not missed a beat despite the challenging 100 days. And I think Wayne is uniquely perfect for this job at this moment. And obviously, he has the support of a lot of police officers that are here. I think he has support of the entire police department. And we will continue to serve, they will continue to serve the residents and meet the day. And if Wayne wants to come up and say a few words, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
Sure, Chief, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Evening, counselors. I'd just like to say, I grew up in the acre section of Haverhill, went to school, Haverhill Schools, spent most of my life in Haverhill, so I'm well-versed in the community. Despite any challenges we might have in the department, the citizens of Haverhill will continue to receive outstanding service as they always have. As you can see, we have some amazing men and women working here, and I look forward to leading them into the future.
Thank you, Chief. We have a few counselors who would like to say something. Counselor Basilea.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief, for being here this evening. Chief, I'd like to draw your attention to the evening of October 10th, when we spoke on the phone. You remember that, I'm sure, sir? And that night, I told you that my principal concern was twofold. It is the well-being of the officers, and it is uninterruptible, continuous professional police services. And you told me that you would ensure both of those. And I'm confident, having talked to many of the officers in the last couple of weeks, and talking to citizens who have, you know, recently, under the most dire of circumstances, had to call 911, people that I've known my whole life, that you are delivering those services. And so, sir, I want to thank you for that. But more particularly, I want to thank the officers, the men and women of the Haverhill Police Department, who during a grueling 100 days, that has been enormously unfair to our city and unfair to you, for showing up every day and doing your job. I noticed it, I see you, and I appreciate you. And my constituents, some 75, I think, that I've spoken to in the last 100 days about the issues who are going on, they are with you en masse. The citizens of Haverhill are with the Haverhill Police Department, at least 98% of them. And I appreciate what you do. Thank you for being here, sir. And the fact that so many officers are here backing you tonight speaks volumes about your character, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief Tracy, for being here today. I've spoken with several officers on the department. Obviously, as the mayor stated, it's been a brutal few months here, and our hearts go out to all of you. But in talking to people, you know, I asked the question, who is the right person in light of everything going on to move the department forward? And I've heard that you are that person. So obviously, you work most closely with the mayor, but I think I speak for all the counselors, and whatever we can do to help you and to help all of you officers move the department forward, we want nothing but the best for you. We want nothing but the best for our residents. So thank you, and you have our support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Counselor Mitchison.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll also concur with what my colleagues have said thus far. But what I really want to do is to let you know that you are in my prayers, along with the department. And I wish you and everyone in the department the best moving forward. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lewandowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Tracy, thank you. Thank you for stepping up and providing leadership and comfort, stability, and a path forward for your department and for the city, both of which are suffering in the wake of twin tragedies. I'm heartened, obviously, by the confidence that this large crowd shows in your abilities. And now, we move forward in strength and compassion, and you have the confidence and support of the entire council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rogers.
Hi, I just want to make it clear, I really appreciate you stepping up. I really appreciate all the officers that are here to support you, and we support you. I just want to make sure that everybody on the city council does support the Haverhill Police Department. I really appreciate all you do. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McGonigal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief Tracy, and thank you, Mayor, for taking decisive action to put the whole department and the city in a good place. With all that has transpired, you do follow in some very fine footsteps for the chiefs that we have worked for in the past. That was, we've always worked together, and I hope you will feel free to contact us if there's anything that we can do to help you, Chief. So appreciate that. I thank you, and nothing but good things from the officers that I've had an opportunity to speak to, so that speaks volumes about you. So thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Page.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the whole entire police department. In the past, and currently, and in the future, we've always been able to depend on you folks and what you've done. What's happening internally is another matter, and you're addressing that, and we'll take care of that on your own. But I've never wavered in my support of you folks. And also, I have greatly appreciated and understand that some of the tragedies, because I've suffered them myself, and Chief Tracy, the first time I met you was one of the worst days of my life. And you, and the force, through all these years, have always been there for myself, for the council, for the residents, for the city. And I applaud you all for being here and standing tall, as you should. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I don't see any of the lights on, and I can't beat what everyone else has said, so I will just say that you do have our full support, as well as the entire department. And we do want you to succeed, and personally, I'm very proud of you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And thank you all for coming. Thank you for showing your support for this, Chief. And we hope that the future will be bright for us. Thank you all. Mayor, did you have anything left to say?
No, I appreciate, you know, the counsel's words. I know that the department is fully behind Wayne Tracy as interim chief. I look forward to working with him. We've already been working pretty closely together for the last week and a half or so, as with the command staff. And, you know, I want to just reassure folks that we will investigate the internal operating system of the department, and we'll figure out, you know, where things went wrong and prevent something like this from happening again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for coming. Oh, Madam Clerk, would you call up the other matter before the chief leaves, so we can appoint him?
Nonconfirming appointments. Lockup keeper Wayne Tracy expires December 31st of 2025.
Do we have a motion to approve? Second. Motion by Counselor Page, second by Counselor Tui. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is approved. Thank you, and congratulations. Next item.
Mayor Barrett wishes to introduce Carrie Perry of Community Action and Fire Chief Robert O'Brien to discuss heating assistance funds and fire safety concerning home heating sources.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll let the room clear out, and then we will have the guests up at the podium. We'll let everyone.
Sure.
Did you guys think everyone was here for you?
I thought the parents were gonna say. You know, this is actually a good story. This is heating assistance.
We traded numbers. All right, yeah. Good. Thank you, Erica.
Trying.
Yeah.
Appreciating it.
We're staying. All right, Mayor Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, counselors. You know, with the current shutdown, that means that monies are not going to the fuel assistance programming that, you know, we rely on, our citizens rely on, that Community Action relies on to give to folks that need fuel assistance. And I invited Carrie Perry here from Community Action, as well as Fire Chief O'Brien, because if people don't have that fuel, they might resort to heating, element kind of heating, electronic heating that can overload a system and cause fires. So I'll let them speak more at length about this, but this is an important issue, and it is a problem that, you know, the federal government is going to have to solve by coming back to work and funding this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, President Sullivan. Thank you, counselors, for having me. I really appreciate this.
Name and business address for the record.
Sure. I'm Carrie Sharon Perry. I'm CEO of Community Action, Inc. We are located at 3 Washington Square here in Haverhill.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Community Action, Inc., I'm not going to go back too far, but let me just talk about Lyndon Johnson for a second. Lyndon Johnson set up the Community Action Network 60 years ago, recognizing that the federal government needed to bring resources close to the community. And the Community Action Network was started. Our friend Callister Byrd, she was the founder, and she still with us. So there's some really strong history here with Community Action in Haverhill. Community Action has partnered with many of you on so many programs with the city, and I'm just grateful to be here because I know that if people's homes aren't being heated, the phone calls are going to come to you. The phone calls, the texts are going to come to your offices, they're going to come to the mayor's office. So I just wanted to get ahead of this. Having a warm October is not a good federal strategy, but that appears the way we're going right now. Just so you know, this program receives bipartisan support, the support of the community, of the light heap dollars, of the heating assistance. This is a cooling program in our southern states. So this is really life or death. It's keeping people from living in overheated homes in the summer and in the winter in the south. But it's also making sure that on cold days in New England, that we have heating assistance. We do not have that right now. The program should have started October 1st. October 1st was the first day of the contract. Terrible timing, as you might imagine. So generally speaking, the contracts are signed through the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. We then contract all of the community action agencies across the state, then contract with the executive office, and then the monies are moved forward. Because that hasn't happened this year, we can't support emergency systems repair. We can't support 100 gallons to go into someone's tank. Our hands are really tied right now, but let me tell you, Community Action is open for business. My energy team is there. To date, as of Monday morning, yesterday morning at 8:00 a.m., we had already received 2,036 applications, close to 90% of which come from Haverhill residents. People are feeling the heat. See what I did there?
Yeah.
People are recognizing the high cost of energy, the high cost of groceries, they are feeling the pinch right now, and people are very anxious to get their applications in. But in years past, when the application goes in, they receive a certification letter shortly thereafter, usually within two to three weeks, and there's a comfort level there. National Grid is shutting people off left and right. The National Grid moratorium doesn't kick in until November 15th. My organization, along with my partner organizations in the state, are lobbying Lieutenant Governor, the Hilli administration, to move that, and the DPU, to move that back, to move that back to at least November 1st, so we can stop the shut-offs. Because once people are certified through Community Action, we can call National Grid and say, don't shut off their heat. We're good for it. They have been approved. We're good to go here. So there's going to be a lot of situations in the very near future, when these temperatures dip, where we're not going to be able to help. We have a small amount of donated funds. They go very quickly, and they're very specific for, you know, certain demographics, certain age groups, as you might imagine. So I just want to know that we're in this together, that we are working for it, that we are anxiously awaiting the funding, but we just want to make sure that people's homes are being heated safely, which is why Chief O'Brien was so kind to come with me tonight. The other issue for me is the small business owners. We work really closely with oil vendors. We work really closely with local plumbers and electricians to make sure when people and households have a heating emergency, they can call us, we can call our vendors who we've worked with for decades, and we're like, we're good for it, we can help support this household. We can't do that right now. So our local vendors, our local oil delivery people are going to be without this program as well for a while. So I just want to keep the small business owners in mind. I want to keep the residents of Haverhill in mind, but I also want to make sure people are safe. So I'd like the expert in the room to speak to that. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Carrie.
Good evening.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you for having me tonight. Robert O'Brien, Fire Chief, Haverhill, 4 Summer Street. I was happy to come and speak tonight on
Thank you for having me tonight. Robert O'Brien, Fire Chief, Haverhill, 4 Summer Street. I was happy to come and speak tonight on this topic, because I think we all know that, just for the average person, the cost of fuel is going up right now. It's scaring a lot of people. Even the average person is going to be forced into possibly making changes to how they heat their home, and that's a concern for all of us, okay? It has to be a concern for all of us. If you don't mind, I know I'm addressing the council tonight, but I'm also addressing anybody that's listening to this. I'd like to take a minute, if you don't mind, just to speak. Through the Fire Marshal's Office, Department of Fire Services, we do our best, community by community, to relay the same message throughout, so it's consistent throughout all the communities in the state. So, if you don't mind, I'm just going to read through some literature that we project to people, and that's how we operate. So, beginning with heating. Heating causes thousands of residential fires every year. It's the number two, heating equipment is the number two cause of fires in Massachusetts. It's the number one cause of carbon monoxide problems and incidents, life safety incidents in the state also. So, we begin with smoke and CO detectors. We all know what we say every year. This time of year, we're changing the clocks. Twice a year, we change our batteries. It's important to make sure you have installed functioning smoke and CO detectors on every level of the house. I know I have a little bit of information, so I'm going to jump through it rather quickly. Please stop me if you have any questions. The actual smoke detectors are generally good for 10 years or less, okay? Depending on the brand, carbon monoxide detectors are good for five to seven years. It's extremely important to have these working and functioning. We see it all the time, whether or not we walk in, they've been pulled down, or they're not functioning for some reasons. Something as simple as, you know, a $20, a $30 detector, you know, the prices have gone up, saves lives. We all understand that. So, moving on from those, most of, the majority of people will usually use like a heating appliance, but it's very common to find people that heat the houses with solid fuels. You're going to have coal, you're going to have firewood, and you're going to have pellets, very popular these days. Couple comments on those. First of all, annually, you must get those systems checked. Chimneys and flues have to be checked annually for soot buildup. That's why we get chimney fires. We get house fires as a result of that. You get blockages that cause CO problems in the house itself, okay? It's very important to be diligent, not just for people here, your families, and everybody else. This all is aligned with what we're talking about tonight, about the safety issues, because it really does affect everybody. Obviously, to some degree, a lot worse, but the average person will have problems with this as well. So, please be diligent. If you use those types of fuels as your primary heating source, you have to have your chimney flue professionally checked and cleaned every year. You want to make sure that you keep a distance of at least three feet minimum from a fireplace or in and around the entire stove itself, okay? Very important. In terms of a fireplace, when you burn, the embers burn, it quickly can consume a room, because something will smolder. You go to bed, it might be in your carpet, it might be in your furniture, and then you're waking up to a fire in your house. Not scare tactics, just reality, folks. So, the actual, make sure you maintain a screen in front of the fireplace. In stoves, do not operate a stove with the door open, okay? Fundamental. We take for granted. I'll just leave it open for a second. Bad things happen, okay? Let's see, moving on. Disposal of ashes. This is a big problem for us. It seems silly. It seems common sense, but it's, we run into it all the time. You empty, whether it be a fireplace or one of your stoves, you empty those hot ashes outside. You're burning. If you're burning, it's cold out. Most times, people will just throw them outside their door, okay? The number of people that put them into plastic rubbish disposable barrels is amazing. They just don't think, okay? So, it has to be in a, you have to dispose these in a metal bucket with a lid. Do not put it by your door, outside the door, because it's convenient. It's cold out. You don't want to go. Do not store it in the garage, and do not store it anywhere near an egress. So, typically, what happens, they do it, fire starts, it burns up, catches the house right at the egress, in which they're depending and trying to get out of the house, okay, folks? So, this is just common knowledge, and please pass this on. And moving right along, I don't want to take too much more of your time. So, space heaters. This is a subject that really aligns with what we're talking about right now. So, when people are desperate, or they don't have any other resources, they go with space heaters. Extremely dangerous, as we know. Never to be used as a primary source of heating. Never, never, ever. Space heater is designed to be plugged directly into a wall. No extension cords and absolutely no power bars. Power bars are one of the worst things we have. It's a convenience. People, the average person will look at a power bar and say, "There's an open outlet there. I must be able to plug something in," when in truth, that's the worst thing you can think of. It's very common. We've had fires that you go into a bedroom, a fire, and you'll see a hairdryer. You'll see a curling iron. You'll see a straightener bar. You'll see a phone charger plugged into these. To draw those, create on the, as a power source in the wall, overheating extension cords, burn the carpet or into the wall, it's real. That's how many of our fires started. It's a very common event, okay? So, please don't use them as the number one source of heating, as we say. Three feet, same rule, three feet all around those. Never operate those and walk out of a room. Typically, you hope, but again, we're talking extreme situations, so this rule won't be adhered to. Never go to bed with one of those on, or never leave the room with one of those on. You want to shut them down. Never extension cords or power strips, like I said. Let's see. Portable kerosene and propane heaters are legal in Massachusetts, plain and simple, for residential use. You only use, you only see those in a commercial environment, and even those are regulated. So, none of these should be used in any residential environment, please. If you know anybody that uses them, insist that they stop. Gas and oil burner equipment, that's what we talked about the heart of this, number two cause of fires in Massachusetts. Have your furnace and hot water checked, just like we talked before, by professional annually. And this is, I can tell you, I personally have been on several fires in my career where this has happened. So, you have your perfect heating source from a heater or a hot water heater, as we know. People tend to work, especially winter projects, they're in the house, they want to get some painting done, they want to store fuel, that maybe for their snowblower, they put it in their basement. You're not supposed to do that. And don't ever be, don't ever find yourself painting or using paint thinner or kerosene, anything like that in there. The vapors hang low. The second the hot water heater goes on, you're enveloped. I had one over in Bradford, a gentleman that had put so much time and money into his house, did a great job, three apartment unit, literally almost at the end of it, and caught the basement, the first floor, on fire. But most importantly, he was lucky to get out alive. He was singed, but he was lucky. He was working. The fumes ignited the minute. He literally enveloped him. So, you have to be cautious of that, folks, okay? A little bit more than you're bargaining for tonight? That's all good. All good. So, natural gas. Natural gas, as we know, if you smell the smell of rotten eggs, that's my captain. That's an additive we add to natural gas so that we do smell it, because it doesn't naturally have a scent in it. Here's the rule, and as adults, we do this, but we, a lot of us have children, teenagers at home. If you're not at home and they're at home, they smell it. Get out of the house. Don't start for anything. Get out of the house. Get clear. Do not re-enter. Call from a neighbor's house. Call from the cell phone if you happen to run out, but get out of the house, okay? Those are serious events. Flipping a light switch on as you leave or doing anything like that can ignite that gas. The spark from a simple light switch will ignite that gas, okay? That's why we're very careful. A lot, we have special tools that are, they don't produce sparks when we use them for that very event, when we deal with gas calls, okay? It's dangerous for us. It's even more dangerous for people that are qualified to deal with it, okay? So, get out of the house and call. Let's see. Heating oil. Again, heating oil, heating equipment that uses heating oil. So, heating oil, it's always recommended, never drain your oil tank down low, if you can help it, okay? Because there's always sediment in the bottom of tanks. When you pull that sludge in through your lines, now you foul your actually, your heating equipment. That causes a lot of problems. In our world, we call it a burn and blowback. It's very common to go in, the house is completely filled with smoke, and if someone's small or elderly, that happens when they're in the basement, they can be quickly overcome by that smoke. It's really acrid, heavy smoke. What happens is it malfunction, when it lights, the heavy fuel burns, it blows back into the building. So, if you have, if the public has any thought that your furnace is not functioning properly, you need to get it maintained and checked, okay? Because the only thing worse than getting, you know, I shouldn't say worse, but an additional problem with that is always, when those bad things happen, they happen in the middle of the winter time, you may be without heat. Then you have freezing problems when you're waiting for that repair to be made. So, be diligent, try to do it before you have, before it's a problem. Carbon monoxide, it's a silent killer. We talk about it all the time. Maintain your detectors, like I said. Every level of the floor outside the bedrooms. Do not use a gas stove. This, again, is another very common event, that when people don't have anything left, they'll open up a gas stove. Many of us, when we were younger, we probably remember family members doing that. When the room is cold, they turn on a gas stove or open a gas oven. Those are fumes, that's CO that's pouring right in there. It's more common than you think. So, that's another serious thing. Do not use it as a source of heating, okay? And again, the last note on that is vents. A lot of the new furnaces today, the high-efficiency ones, have PVC venting or any vents that you have. You have to keep them clear. They usually come out about waist level out of your house, whether it's a snowdrift, whether you're throwing snow with a snowblower in the wintertime, or whether you have bushes that block these, you have to make sure these aren't blocked. They have to open up, because that, if it has no place to go, it's going to go backwards. Now, a lot of the safeties in the new furnaces will shut these off, but in that interim, you don't want to take the risk of that, going in, going back into your house. I'll leave you with this. Top five causes of fires in Massachusetts. Cooking. Unattended cooking is a major problem. People walk out, they turn the burners on, they go about their house where their food's heating up. It's the number one cause of fires in Massachusetts. Heating equipment, as I just mentioned, is the number two. Electrical, faulty wiring or overloaded circuits. In my world, it tends to be overloaded circuits, which causes a lot of fires. Number four is smoking. Smoking is still highly, is one of the high numbers. We've done a better job in recent years in getting those numbers down. Improper disposal of cigarettes, cigarettes and associated issues with it. That's so typical. In the wintertime, people don't want to go out, they'll throw cigarettes in the room against the house, and five hours later, the house is burning while they're sleeping. It just happens. It's the last smoke of the night. We see it all the time. And then last, number five is arson. Actually, I want to jump back to smoking one last thing. Just remember that the smoking fires are the deadliest fires that we deal with, just because, as I said, because typically, when you have those fires, a lot of times, they're at night, or people are smoking in bed, that type of thing. They're the most deadly fires. And then five is arson. They're a significant factor for residential fires and deaths. I hope I gave you enough information, folks. If you have any information, if you have any questions, you want to review any of this, you can find it on Department of Fire Services, through the Fire Marshal's Office, and my office, anytime you want. If you have any questions, please feel free to call. So, hopefully covered everything.
We do have a counselor with a question. Counselor Mitch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there any concrete action that we can take as a city council to help Carrie and Community Action during this time?
So, your Community Development Office, through Andrew Hurley, has provided us with funding to support Haverhill residents. So, we do have funding for FY26 that we can use to support, which this has been a longstanding partnership, really critical funding, because if somebody, if we put oil on someone's tank in August, they're not, it's not going to last the whole season. So, if we're able to also supplement with that. But more importantly, it's a touch point. My office can reach out to somebody, especially if it's an elderly person who's isolated at home. My office can have a second reach out. The oil company, you can't believe what these oil guys do. I had an oil guy who was bringing $30 worth of oil to a woman's house every week. I was like, "Give me this guy's number. This has to stop." But like, just really nice. But I think she didn't have a lot of money, but she also, I think she liked the company. So, we just have to be mindful of the amazing people on the ground who are doing this work. We have some fantastic local charities and foundations who are supporting this work as well. But I think the most important thing to do at this point is reach out to your federal delegation and let them know that this is, this is something that is causing great concern with potential fire risk, but also, we want to make sure our residents who pay federal taxes are being cared for. So, I think the best way to do this is through advocacy.
And just want to end by saying, thank you for fighting for those that need it the most.
I appreciate that. We're in this together, John.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Counselor, did you want to make a motion that the council will send a letter to our federal legislative.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Counselor Mitchison, a second by Vice President Jordan. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that passes, but we're not done yet. Counselor Vazilia.
Carrie, I just want to be very clear. You started out talking about the federal shutdown, and so, my question is, is the, I think the answer is yes, but is the federal shutdown have us on the precipice of a major crisis insofar as heating people's homes?
Potentially, yes. Absolutely. I do not have spending authority. I do not have, I cannot solve the problem, which is really frustrating for me, because I have a team of 140 people who come to work every day, ready to solve problems. But right now, we're able to bring applications in, but when you're asking the question, when you're saying, "What do you need?" And they tell you what you need, and we can't help them. It's a cause for concern, and I just don't know what's happening. There doesn't seem to be an end in sight right now. So, there is a carryover for the state of Massachusetts. From what I understand, there's about $8 million that have been carried over from FY25. So, we're working with the Executive Office of Housing to see if we can bring that back into the network, into, there's about 22 of us that do this. We could bring that in and sort of borrow against, you know, when the federal dollars come moving forward. So, I'm hoping that happens. We're working really closely with Ed Augustus, who is the Secretary for Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So, we're working every angle we can here, you know? But the state is well aware of this. I'm hoping the state could, potentially, we're asking the state of Massachusetts to open up their coffers to borrow against the federal dollars coming back. So, we're trying to be, we are trying to be creative. We're trying to be, you know, helpful, but mostly, we're trying to keep people warm as, you know, as the winter moves forward here.
Where are we 30 days from now, if the government is shut down?
Cold. Yeah, cold, but working very closely with our state partners, working very closely with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and the Healey administration. They're going to hear from all over the state. You know, we are in eastern Massachusetts, obviously. My partners out in western Mass are over 80% delivered fuels. These are people who are going to be in a very tricky situation. In small businesses, these oil vendors who are not going to be in a position to front the money. They can't do it. So, you know, we're in a better position out here, because a lot of our, a lot of our residents heat their homes through National Grid. So, that puts us in a bit of a different situation than our partners out west.
All right. Well, thank you for that answer, but let the record reflect, I'm measurably less than thrilled.
Yeah, me too. I appreciate that, Councilman. But just so you know, we're working to solve this problem, but I just wanted this council to know, and the citizens to know, what we have in store for us in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ferreira.
Thank you very much for this update. It's something I've already been hearing about, is the concern of applying and not knowing if you're getting funding. My family relied on fuel assistance for many, many years. It's what helped us afford our first home here in Haverhill. And I am wondering if this year, are you seeing more applications at this point than previous?
Yeah, we are, and they're coming in rapidly. But we also have 136 applications to date from Haverhill residents who have never applied before. So, to get those applications in the door this early before, you know, the season starts, which, the season starts November 1st. That's when we're allowed, that's when we have spending authority. So, we're seeing a lot of people who haven't done this before. And that's, we're happy to have them. That's what we do. We're happy to support people who are eligible. There's a very lengthy eligibility determination, you know, you have to, you have to meet the income requirement. So, we're very careful about this. Good stewards of the money.
As much as it feels like we're in dire straits with this funding, should people who think they may be eligible still be applying?
100%, yes. Yes, we are open for business. We are here to support, and we are certifying applications every single day, in hopes that when this government opens, we can move money very quickly and let National Grid know what's happening and overwhelm our local oil vendors with deliveries. It's going to, it's going to happen quick. I'm just waiting.
For me, I think it's also important to remind people that it is free to apply.
It's free to apply.
There's help filling out your application.
Absolutely.
You can come in person. People can call you back and work with you over the phone. They can make copies, if you're having a hard time getting copies of income.
It's never the issue.
Documents or whatever. All of that help is available through Community Action. And for a lot of people, I think they don't realize that the income guidelines are different than other social service support programs. So, you may be eligible for this, even though you may not be eligible for SSI or something like that.
That's exactly right.
So, if you are thinking you may be on the cusp, I think it's a worthy program to apply to, and it is helpful, and it does take some stress and burden off of you, if that's your concern for the winter, especially for our elderly population as well.
Especially for our elderly population. This is something that we need to look out and check in on our neighbors about, because a lot of, a lot of people who I talk to say, "Oh, no, give it to somebody else. It's not, I don't need it." They need it more than me. And we just want to make sure people who are isolated at home, mostly elderly and disabled, that they understand that this program is for them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hobbs Everett.
Thank you, Carrie. There used to be certain protections with National Grid. You know if that still exists? Like, so if you qualify? Like, so if you qualify, even the funding isn't coming out, that that kind of freezes your bill, so to speak? Does that still exist?
Absolutely. So, we can let people know, but we can't this year, because National Grid knows we don't have spending authority. So, once a month, on the first Tuesday of each month, we have National Grid in our office. Lots and lots of residents are there. It's really helpful to be talking to a person and not be sitting on the phone, waiting to talk to a person for an hour. So, we're able to start good faith programs together, good faith payment plans together. But DPU has this same list. So, if you have a child who, I wish I had it in front of me, a child under one, if you have a health issue at home, especially if you need oxygen in your house, there are, and I can get that up for you, that information tomorrow, but there are protections in Massachusetts, but the November fifteenth deadline is the moratorium right now. This is something else you might want to advocate for. We've got to pull that back to November first. We've got to shut, if we, if people start getting shut off, it's just going to create a larger issue than we already have. So, we want to make sure the systems stay in place, that the accounts stay live before this money comes in.
Thank you. That was one of my biggest reasons asking, because it does protect the shut off.
It should, yeah, but this year, we're sort of up against it right now, but you're absolutely right.
So, that November first instead of November fifteenth, folks.
Yeah, that's an important, two weeks is going to save a lot of households from a shut off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I don't see any lights on or any questions, so thank you both for coming. Thank you, Mayor, for having them.
I really appreciate this opportunity. Hopefully, we'll have some good news soon.
And we'll start our advocacy work right away.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We're all in this together, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Madam Clerk, could you move up item six point one?
President Sullivan wishes to introduce Tammy Dobrodelski to announce this year's Wreaths Across America campaign at the Hilldale Cemetery.
Thank you. Tammy and Kim are both with us tonight. Kim, are you coming up? Come on up.
Don't be shy, Kim.
To discuss this year's Wreaths Across America campaign at Hilldale Cemetery.
I just had to say, the fire chief just added a few things to my to-do list.
If you could give us your name and address for the record.
Tammy Dobrodelski, Sixth Shaman Avenue.
Kim Ocasio, sixty-four Homestead Street.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilors, for your attention and support this evening, and thank President Sullivan for inviting me tonight. Many of you have supported Hilldale Cemetery and Wreaths Across America throughout our years of participation. This year is our eighth year participating in the Wreaths Across America program. The program seeks to remember our fallen veterans, honor our currently serving military members and living veterans, and to teach the value and sacrifice of military service. This year's event takes place on December thirteenth across this country, in American cemeteries abroad and at sea. Volunteers will lay more than three million wreaths at over forty-nine hundred locations in an event that emphasizes solidarity and pride of purpose. This year's event theme is Keep Moving Forward. As I pondered my remarks tonight, I found this hard to express in the current national climate, but Wreaths Across America is not a political event. It remembers, honors, and teaches about veterans and service members from all walks of life. Keep Moving Forward means to me, in the context of what we do at Hilldale, to continue to work on our restoration effort, which includes locating and restoring those veteran graves lost to time and previous neglect. Keep Moving Forward to our Small Board of Volunteer members means bringing more of our community together to support the Wreaths Across America mission. Keep Moving Forward means to foster engagement with local groups, including the JROTC at Haverhill High, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the DAR, the VFW, AMVETS, and American Legion, to promote, remember, honor, teach. Keep Moving Forward is the message of hope we all need today. It is our hope that along with Mayor Barrett and the city council, members of the greater Haverhill community will join us to observe this solemn ceremony and to participate in laying the four hundred and seventy-four wreaths at Hilldale Cemetery on December thirteenth at noon. In order to do so, we need organizations, businesses, and individuals to sponsor wreaths. Of our four hundred and seventy-four, we currently have two hundred and sixty-nine sponsored, leaving two hundred and five to go. The easiest way to sponsor is by using our dedicated website, www.hilldalewreaths.com. Wreaths are seventeen dollars each to sponsor. These are not holiday wreaths. They are specially crafted symbolic balsam wreaths handmade by the skilled artisans of the Worcester Wreath Company in Columbia, Maine. The company's founder, Morrel Worcester, and his family created this event and support it with love and commitment to the mission. There are ten clusters of balsam in each wreath, set into a circle representing eternity, and topped with a red bow symbolizing great sacrifice. The ten balsam clusters represent the ten qualities veterans and service members embody: belief, strength, honesty, humility, ambition, optimism, concern for the future, pride in duty, their hopes and dreams, and love of their country. As each wreath is laid, the veteran's name is read aloud. This is the most important part of the event, because it keeps those veterans from dying the final death of being forgotten. Hilldale Cemetery Association Board supports the event, plans the ceremony, and organizes the volunteers, but beyond this, and in order to host this event, we need volunteers to help with maintenance and recovery efforts all year to keep the cemetery moving forward in its reclamation efforts. Please follow us on our Hope for Hilldale page to find out about events and fundraising. At the end of the day, making sure our veterans are not forgotten is the core of our mission. We hope the Haverhill community comes out to remember, honor, and teach with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kim, could you hold up the magazine you have? You made Haverhill magazine.
We did. She made it twice.
There's a very nice article in there about the Wreaths Across America campaign. Page fifty, Ringing True. Very, very nice piece. Thank you for everything you do. You know the council supports you every year. Many of us do purchase wreaths. And again, how, if people are interested in purchasing wreaths, what's the easiest way to go?
www.hilldarewreaths.com.
Hilldalewreaths.com. That way, they make sure the wreaths go towards.
Right, it goes, it's our dedicated page through Wreaths Across America.
Great. And what was the other article about?
The Ocasios True Martial Arts Turkey Brigade.
Oh, nice. Congratulations.
May I mention that this, it's a who's who in this article? I mean, I see Counselor Jordan, Counselor Lewandowski, I see the mayor, I see Counselor Sullivan, I see Counselor Rogers. I mean, this might be, and me, might be the best addition ever.
Wait for it, wait for it, and me.
Well, since no one spoke up for me.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. We appreciate it. We look forward to the, to the event on the thirteenth of December.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, could you move up next, item twelve point four?
Event permit twenty-five dash twenty-nine, Anastasia Demopolis, for Hellenic Orthodox Community to hold a two-day annual festival with food and music to be held on November seventh and eighth, eleven a.m. to one a.m. at one fifty-four Winter Street, with license commission approval, requesting additional fees be waived.
Thank you. Is Anastasia here?
Yes.
All right, then we'll go to Counselor Mitchison.
Thank you very much, and if you would like authentic Greek food, this is the place to go. And everybody's shaking their head, yes. I'm going to be one of the servers in line. You know, for many years, people would say that, you know, we always see you when you go, I mean, when we go to the festival. And then one day, I said, how about if I help and serve instead of eating? So, anyway, it's a great event. It keeps the Greek church lights on, and you'll see a lot of your friends there.
Would you like to make a motion to approve this, waiving the fees?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Counselor Mitchison, a second by Vice President Jordan. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Basilea.
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs Everett.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchison.
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira.
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski.
Yes.
Counselor Tui.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor LePage.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
And President Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays.
And that's approved. Thank you very much. And then we can go back to the regular order of business when you're ready.
Mayor Barrett submits an order authorizing the mayor to accept a gift of three parcels of land from the Kissel family, map six seventy-one, block six oh two, lots seven A, eight A, and nine A, and accompanying correspondence from the city solicitor pertaining thereto. Order that the city of Haverhill votes to accept the land gifted to the city of Haverhill situated on Guile Street, being map six seventy-one, block six oh two, lots seven A, eight A, and nine A, from the Kissel family. Related communication from city solicitor Lisa Mead.
Do we have a motion to approve? Mayor, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilors. Michael Kissel came into the office. He, his father had bought these properties many years ago. He doesn't know exactly why he did, but he was paying the, it was a very small property tax, but it was, it was like two dollars. It was something really small. But he had been paying it since his parents passed and just wanted to be through with it. There was no plan to do anything with the land and offered it to the city.
Great. Thank you for that explanation. Do we have a?
Make that motion.
Second.
Who made the motion? Counselor McGonigal?
Mm-hmm.
And a second loudly by Counselor?
Sorry.
Tui. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor, Vice President Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Basilea.
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs Everett.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchison.
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira.
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski.
Yes.
Counselor Tui.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor LePage.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
And President Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays.
That passes. Thank you.
Mayor Barrett submits an order to authorize the mayor to execute easements with New Alpha Bro Property LLC and GNC Concrete Construction Incorporated regarding the Little River Dam Removal Project. Order authorize mayor to execute easements for Little River Dam Removal Project, thirty Stevens Street and ninety-three Lafayette Square.
Mayor Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilors. This is basically one step on the road to dam removal. We have monies to remove the dam. We will, if so approved, this is just an easement so we can have the park area, the walkway area at the Little River Dam. This is a step, and this is just one step in a long process. It's a legacy process and project that stems back from pre-COVID. You know, at that time, the city did, you know, a risk analysis of, you know, climate change and what would happen, and the removal of the dam was identified back, I think it was two thousand and nineteen, don't quote me on that, but it goes back quite a ways. And this is just part of that.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Counselor McGonigal, a second by Counselor LePage. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Basilea.
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs Everett.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchison.
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira.
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski.
Yes.
Counselor Tui.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor LePage.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
And President Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays.
And that passes.
Mayor Barrett submits an order authorizing the mayor to acquire permanent easement from the Massachusetts Electric Company for property located adjacent to the northern mound of the Haverhill landfill. This order requires a two-thirds majority vote by the city council. Order landfill northern mound closure project easement acquisition from Massachusetts Electric Company.
Mayor Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilors. And Bob Ward is here also if we have any technical questions, but as you all know, we have a consent decree, and we are supposed to close the northern mound of the old Groveland Road dump. We have a cap on the southern mound already, which has solar panels on it. This piece of easement is, you know, an old line for National Grid, and just to control the site, we needed this easement, and I'll let Bob explain anything technical that you might need.
I don't see any lights on, but Bob, would you like to explain something technical to us?
No. He's a technical guy.
It's an easement, and it, you all have the concept plan in your packages. So, this easement connects the two dots together. You have the southern mound and northern mound, and we're building the athletic fields on the northern mound, so this will make the connection so that we can access the northern mound for both construction as well as public access after the fields are built and all the maintenance activities, operation, all that stuff, and the ongoing environmental monitoring for the northern mound related to the cap.
Thank you. Vice President Jordan has a question.
Yeah, just question on the playing fields. I mean, I'm sure it's a ways off. Do you have a ballpark guess of when theoretically those will be ready for kids to play on?
It's, so, it's an eighteen month, will start next year, so maybe twenty-seven, fall of twenty-seven.
Okay.
I think, you know, we want to make sure the grass is well established before.
Sure.
People go out there.
Yep. Thank you.
Move for passage?
Second. Well, never mind. Motion by Counselor McGonigal, second by Counselor LePage. This requires a two-thirds vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Basilea.
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs Everett.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchison.
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira.
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski.
Yes.
Counselor Tui.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor LePage.
Yes.
Mayor Barrett submits an order to revise the early sign-up bonus for snow plowing, clearing, and hauling services for the 2025-2026 winter season. Order, Document 117 of December 28th of 2021. In order relating to rates for private snow plowing and hauling, B, and is hereby deleted in its entirety and the following inserted in place thereof with accompanying notes, related communication from Robert Eadward, DPW Director.
Mayor Barrett.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilors. Uh, you know, obviously in the city of Haverhill, we rely extensively on private contractors to do our plowing. We have over two hundred and sixty miles of roadway, uh, you know, thirty-six square miles of area to cover. And our DPW is not as big as it might have been when I was a kid. Uh, so we do rely on these, these contractors. And in order, we like to have them onboard ahead of schedule, so we have a, a, an appropriate number. By, um, raising this bonus, I think last year it was two dollars, Bob?
Bob, would you go over the-
Three, three, and we're raising it.
Could you review the bonuses, the, the increases for us?
Excuse me?
This, there are sign-up bonuses.
Sign-up bonuses, yeah.
Yeah, it's an early sign-up bonus. So if you sign up, we're changing the date. We're moving the date back a little bit to, um, November fourteenth. Last year, we were a little later getting to you to adjust the rates, so this year we're moving it back a little bit. But the rates, the early sign-up bonus, the last year, we bumped the actual rates up by quite a bit, by about nine percent. So this year, after looking at everything, looking at competitive rates, um, we settled in on leaving the base hourly rates the same and bumping up the early sign-up bonus. So we bumped that up by two dollars across the board, so five dollars for the smaller trucks and seven dollars as per hour, five dollars per hour for the smaller trucks and seven dollars per hour for the larger trucks and the tractors.
And what does that bring us to a total hourly for-
So the total hourly ranges for the smaller trucks, uh, ninety-six dollars an hour, and the larger ones up to a hundred and thirty-eight dollars an hour. And the tractors, depending on plow size, are a hundred and forty-four to a hundred and fifty-one dollars an hour.
Is it your opinion that makes us more competitive?
Um, we're in the range. Yeah, we're not the highest, we're not the lowest. So we're chipping away at.
Thank you. I don't see any councilor's lights on, so would someone like to make a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Vice President Jordan, a second by-
Mitchetson.
Counselor Mitchetson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
May one second to write.
Sure. Take your time.
Vice President Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Basileir.
Abstain.
Counselor Hobbs Everett.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchetson.
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira.
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski.
Yes.
Counselor Chewie.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor LePage.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Abstain.
And President Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine yays, zero nays, zero absent, two abstentions.
And that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Christine Webb, City Assessor, submits the abatement report for the month of September 2025.
We have a motion to accept or-
So moved. Second.
Motion by Vice President Jordan, a second by Counselor Chewie. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Angel A. Perkins, City Auditor and Chief Financial Officer, submits the revenue and expense reports for the city's general and operating budgets through September thirtieth of 2025.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Council LePage, second by Council McGonigal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes.
Uh, this is a hearing, Document 99-A, petition from National Grid in Verizon, New England. WR number 311-50941, requesting joint pole location on Garfield Street.
And we have Brian Saffler online. Can you get him, uh? He's just on talk. Audio only?
Hello.
Good evening. How you doing, Brian? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm doing pretty well.
Name and business address for the record, please.
Yes.
I'm opening the hearing, Brian. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Brian Saffler. I'm here representing National Grid today, located at 1101 Turnpike Street in North Andover. I'm here to discuss about five petitions here with you today. Um, we can start off with 311-50941. Uh, this is regarding a relocation of a pole that will be moving about twenty feet northeast of its existing location. This is to accommodate for a customer's new driveway that was built in recently.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter in favor? Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor? And I don't believe there's anyone online. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to allowing this pole? Anyone in opposition? I do not hear or see anyone who wants to speak in opposition. I'll close the hearing. What you wishes, counsel.
So moved. Passage?
Second.
Uh, motion by Counselor Mitchetson, second by Counselor McGonigal. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Basileir.
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs Everett.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchetson.
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira.
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski.
Yes.
Counselor Chewie.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor LePage.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
And President Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays.
And that passes. Before we go to the next one, Brian, we have to read each one of these into the record, and we need to open and close the hearing for each one, okay? So Madam Clerk, let's-
Yeah, of course.
Uh, this is a hearing, Document 99-B, petition from National Grid in Verizon, New England. WR number 311-88397, requesting joint pole location on High Street.
I now open this hearing. Brian, tell us about this one.
Uh, so this is an installation of one new JO pole on High Street, beginning at a point approximately ninety-two feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of High Street and Glades Del Street. Uh, this will be an installation of a new pole. It's a mid-span pole between pole, uh, eight and nine. And this pole will be housing some equipment that will be put into place to improve reliability, especially during storms.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone else in favor? Not seeing anyone online or here. Is there anyone opposed? Anyone opposed to allowing this? Not seeing or hearing anyone opposed. I will close the hearing. Counsel, what you wishes.
Move for passage.
Uh, motion by Council McGonigal, a second by Vice President Jordan. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Basileir.
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs Everett.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchetson.
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira.
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski.
Yes.
Counselor Chewie.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor LePage.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
And President Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays.
And that passes.
Uh, this is a hearing, Document 99-C, petition from National Grid in Verizon, New England. WR number 311-88400, requesting joint pole location on Rogers Road.
I will now open this hearing. Brian, tell us about this one.
Uh, this is a pole located on Rogers Road. National Grid is to install one JO pole, beginning at a point approximately a hundred and ninety feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Rogers Road and Ward Hill Avenue. National Grid will install a new pole, pole seven dash fifty, at approximately these coordinates in Haverhill, Mass. This pole will be between poles eight and seven. This pole will be also, um, equipped with special equipment to improve reliability, uh, in the area, especially during storms.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Not seeing anyone here or online. Is there anyone opposed to this? Is there anyone opposed? Not seeing or hearing anyone. I will close the hearing. Counsel, what you wishes.
Move for passage.
Motion by Vice President Jordan, a second by Counsel McGonigal. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, Vice President Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Basileir.
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs Everett.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchetson.
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira.
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski.
Yes.
Counselor Chewie.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor LePage.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
And President Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays.
And that passes.
This is a hearing, Document 99-D, petition from National Grid in Verizon, New England. WR number 311-88421, requesting joint pole location on Ward Hill Ave.
I now open this hearing. Brian, tell us about this one. Brian, you're up. Tell us about the pole. Ward Hill.
Yes. Ward Hill Avenue. National Grid is to install one JO pole on Ward Hill Avenue, beginning at a point approximately three hundred and sixty-eight feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Rogers Road and Ward Hill Avenue. Uh, National Grid will install a new pole, pole two dash fifty. Uh, this pole is between pole two and pole three. Uh, this is also another pole that will be set in place to house equipment that will be improving reliability in the area for customers, as well as storm hardening.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone else in favor? Not seeing anyone here or online in favor. Is there anyone opposed? Is there anyone opposed to allowing this pole? Not seeing or hearing anyone here or online. I will close the hearing. Counsel, what you wishes.
So moved.
Passage?
Second.
By Vice President Jordan, a second by Counselor Chewie. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Basileir.
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs Everett.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchetson.
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira.
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski.
Yes.
Counselor Chewie.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor LePage.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
And President Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays.
And that passes.
Uh, and docu- uh, this is a hearing, Document 99-E, petition from National Grid, WR number 311-401-77, requesting the installation of underground facilities on Back Lane.
I will open this hearing. Brian, tell us about this one.
Yes, so, uh, National Grid proposes installing approximately four hundred and fifty feet of underground primary from pole six to pad one and customer installed two-to-three inch conduit. National Grid will install, uh, one twenty-five KVA transformer on Back Lane, Haverhill. So this job here is to provide power to a customer on twenty Back Lane. Currently, as, from what I remember of this job, there is overhead that currently feeds this customer. And due to all the trees in the area, the customer has requested to move everything underground to prevent any possible, uh, power outages during storms because of the tree line in that area. So we're going to be moving everything underground towards that customer.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone else in favor? Don't see anyone here or online. Is there anyone else opposed? Anyone opposed to allowing this? Ma'am, come on up.
Hi.
If you could just speak into the microphone and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Janice Bruce. I live at Forty River Road, Haverhill, Mass. Um, this, it's concerning part of my property. They sent me the letter. I was told by the, um, individual-
Could you move the microphone closer to you just so we can, yeah, that's great. Thanks.
I don't have to stand on my toes. I was told by the Na- the National Grid individual that, um, he came down to look at the poles and the trees and told me he was going to cut down the trees in the middle of my waterfront memorial park to my, for my father and mother, both Coast Guard commanders. So I was kind of, um, taken back here that it, he's talking about something else. It also concerns me as it's my property that leads down Back Lane to the point in the back, about a thousand feet back from the street. Uh, I'm concerned about the trees and the foliage and the privacy. I would like to know more about what the plans are for the deforestation that I was told was going to happen a few weeks ago by one of the individuals in the truck that was parked in my waterfront. Uh, that's what they were going to do. If they're not planning deforestation and they simply want to put it underground, under the pavement, that, that, where the rest of the utilities are, are, I have absolutely no objections.
Thank you.
But I'm concerned. I just, I don't understand quite everything that he was saying.
Could you clarify for us why, uh, why someone would tell you that they were going to remove trees there on your land?
A neighbor called them to tell them that a piece of the, um, strapping that went from one pole to the other was snapped, and they want to replace it, which is fine, but they don't need to cut down three perfectly good, healthy trees to get to it if they're using a lift and a boom.
Okay. Um, Brian, can you answer the questions raised about concerns about trees cut, being cut in the area to do this?
So, yeah, um-
Are there any trees coming down?
That was a question I did ask, uh, the designer. I was told no at the time. Because according to this job here, as the way I see it, um, there should be primary on that pole, and we're just tapping into that primary and going underground. To me, I don't see a reason why trees should be cut for this unless we're pulling primary there. Um-
How about back from the, the main road, River Road, is the work considered?
So would the, would the trees be on River Road?
No, they go down the Back Lane.
Sir, did you want to speak? Can you, can you address this concern? Well, that's fine, uh, but can you address our concerns about the trees? Then maybe you should come up now. Name and address for the record.
My name is Vin Kelly. I'm twenty Back Lane, Haverhill. I'm the sole property owner on, on Back Lane. There's one house on Back Lane, runs approximately eight hundred feet. I paid in two thousand and seven to have Back Lane put in, and it was put into city standards. Uh, three years later, the city accepted Back Lane. I've been having problems with the Bruce family down front since I bought the property in two thousand and seven after spending thirty-five years away from Haverhill, thirty of which were in the Marine Corps. Back Lane is built to city specifications. The easement on the Bruce property had two trees removed. The trees were infested. They're ash trees. And there's a series of birch tree, uh, beech trees that run up and down Back Lane. There's been a total of twenty trees taken down, ten on my property, ten along Back Lane. I paid to have the trees taken down. The beech were infected with fungus. The ash was a weevil. The tree department was up there. Uh, I forget the tree department superintendent's name. He's, he was up there this summer. Uh, he, he confirmed that the trees were dead. They had to come down. They were a risk coming down on the power lanes. I have paid as much money as I'm going to pay taking trees down along Back Lane. There, it's a city problem. By going underground, I'm preventing these trees from coming down in the winter. There's probably about a, you could go up there and take a look. There's probably about another fifteen trees along Back Lane that will eventually come down, and they'll come down on the power lanes. What I want is I want the, uh, the power lines and Comcast underground.
So that the trees don't disrupt your service-
Absolutely.
-when they fall.
Now, along the Bruce property, two trees, like I said, were taken down. Uh, they were, they were on the easement. They're not on the Bruce property, and the superintendent of tree department and the city engineer has confirmed that that is part of Back Lane easement. It's not part of the Bruce property.
So the trees that would remain, that would be taken down, there are trees left to be taken down or not?
All the trees that have to come down are down.
You will be taking down no more trees?
No, no more along the easement. Davco, Jay Daviditz has been up there. Uh, the trench inspector for National Grid's been up there, and they've confirmed that there's enough width on the easement to go underground without taking any more trees down.
Okay. Thank you. Miss, if you could come back up, um, does that satisfy your concerns that there are no more trees being removed?
For the Back Lane, there's still probably going to be a problem with the waterfront memorial because apparently that's, um, the street crossing it. It's not a part of this concern today.
Waterfront memorial?
My parents are both Coast Guard commanders for thirty years, fifteen oh three oh five.
So what is the memorial consist of?
It's a garden. It's a waterfront. It's a, he has a ramp up here, a dock.
And are the underground lines going through your memorial garden?
Again, uh, there was a two separate, uh, things. I was told a few weeks ago that the National Grid was going to come and do that, so I wanted to, um, be here because it's his memorial. And underground, those underground services should have been done when they cut down the trees and put down this-
But we'll do it now.
Right, right. Should have been done then. Um, I have no problem, so that should have been done that way in the, in the first place. But one of the trees he cut down wasn't anywhere near his house. It was right in front of my porch, a hundred feet, not even a hundred feet.
But if the tree was determined to be damaged and, and, and it was in danger of falling, I can see why it had to go.
They did it on their, they did it on themselves. The city didn't do it.
All right, let's get back to, um-
Thank you.
Brian?
Yep.
We're going to close the hearing. We're going to, councilors have questions?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, no, you will have your, yes. Uh, close the hearing, but councilors do have questions. Counselor McGonigal.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to, uh, put it into, thank you for your service, number one. Uh, number two, Brian, can you answer, this is going from a pole that's there. You said you're taking the primary off that and just going underground the rest of the way. So those trees, if they fall, might be unsightly, but it's not going to knock this power out. Is that pretty accurate?
Yes, that is correct. As long as the wires are underground, power will not be knocked out by trees.
Okay, so there's nowhere in your paperwork that says you're removing trees. You're just going to do what you normally do when you put power under the ground?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Lewandowski.
Thank you, President Sullivan. I, I was just going to echo what my, uh, colleague said because I wasn't sure. We didn't really have a definitive answer from National Grid as to whether or not they are, they are not removing, but it seems to me that he is now saying that they are not. So if he can categorically say that they are not, then I don't see any reason why we can't move forward tonight. Otherwise, I would ask that we table and get, um, a definitive answer from someone at National Grid that can give us the design specs for that particular pole location. Let us know.
But we have been told that we, there will be no more trees being removed, that all the trees have been. All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Move for passage?
Motion by Counselor Ferreira, a second by Counsel McGonigal. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Basileir.
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs Everett.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchetson.
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira.
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski.
Yes.
Counselor Chewie.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor LePage.
Yes.
Counselor Rogers.
Yes.
And President Sullivan. Eleven yays, zero nays.
And that passes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir.
This is a hearing, City Council Special Permit 25-9, Galen Bolio for Garden Primrose LLC requests to rent her ninety-six hundred square foot building at 261 Primrose Street to a gym. She is requesting to allow gyms and other athletic entertainment companies be allowed in the space, which is not included in the current zoning.
I will now open this hearing, and welcome. If you could give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, um, Galen Bolio, 639 East Broadway, Haverhill. My, thank you. My business-
Tell us about your project, what you would like to do.
Um, well, it's not really a project, but my business is at 261 Primrose Street, across from Joseph's Pasta, next door to Otto's Pizza, the old Al's Diner. I moved my business there twenty-three years ago from North Andover. So, um, at that time, I rented that location out, portions of it to a, um, to a limo company. And since then, I've had the whole building to myself. Now I want to rent out about three thousand square feet to, well, I wanted to rent it out to a gym, but they've since moved on because it took four months to get this on the agenda tonight. So they've moved on to somewhere else. So I can still ask to get approval for a gym or other recreational use. But the bigger, um, question is, um, I've somehow lost usage of my building through the rewriting of a code. In speaking with, um, Tom Bridgewater, he said that he thinks it was an oversight and that the code was rewrit- rewritten to eliminate some uses, but not on purpose. So, um, he said the best thing to do would be to come before the city council to get that, I don't know, rewritten. What I'd like is to have whatever usage I used to have before the codes were rewritten, honestly. Um, if we can only, um, vote on athletic and gym, I'll take it, but it seems that it should be, I, I don't know why it was changed. Um, he said the previous zoning code allowed gyms by Wright and many other businesses, but, um, now they're not. And it's a commercial neighborhood type, um, location. There's houses, there's businesses. So I guess I'm asking for the gym and other entertainment, but also asking in broader terms to just be put back to how it was before. However, it was written before to have- be put back to how it was before, however it was written before to have-
You're absolutely correct that the only thing you're asking for tonight is for a gym. So, if you are looking for a wider range of uses for that property, that would require us to make zoning changes, you could always come back at another time and do that. But tonight, the only thing we, if we choose to, would be to allow you to do the three-thousand-foot gym at that location. That's just to be clear. That's the only thing we can do here tonight. And you want to move forward with that?
Sure.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about this project? Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone online? I don't see anyone. Is there anyone opposed to allowing the use of this property for that purpose? Is there anyone here opposed? And there's no one online opposed. I will close the hearing. Counselors, what you wish.
Move for passage.
Second.
We have a motion by Counsel McGonigal, a second by Counselor Tui, and we have questions. Counselor Hobbs Everett?
I just had one question. You had mentioned that the current zoning change impacted your current business?
No, did not. It did not impact me in my current business.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't see any of the lights on, so, Counselors, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to approve the allowance of a gym at this location.
Vice President Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Basileir?
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs Everett?
Yes.
Counselor Midgetson?
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira?
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski?
Yes.
Counselor Tui?
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal?
Yes.
Counselor LePage?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
And President Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
And that passes. Thank you. We're on to twelve point one.
Petition from National Grid, WR three-one-one-six-seven-nine-seven-six, requesting the installation of underground facilities at Washington Street. Hearing scheduled for November eighteenth.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Counsel Midgetson, second by Counsel McGonigal, to hear this on November eighteenth. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Petition from National Grid and Verizon, New England, WR number three-one-one-four-one-two-two-two-one, requesting joint pole location on Hazelton Street. Hearing scheduled for December second.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counsel McGonigal, a second by Vice President Jordan, to hear this on December second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Tag days with police approval, Tag Day Twenty-five dash twenty-three, hunking eighth grade, November twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counsel McGonigal, a second by Vice President Jordan. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Order pay bills for the previous fiscal year. Vendor, SFE Energy, amount one dollar, and the account Highway Department. Vendor, Merchant McIntyre and Associates, amount eight thousand dollars, account, amount eight thousand dollars, account Highway Department, ah, sorry, Mayor's Office. Vendor, CBIZ, amount six thousand five hundred dollars, account Auditor's Office, for a total of fourteen thousand five hundred and one dollars.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counselor Midgetson, second by Counselor McGonigal. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to pay the previous year bills.
Vice President Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Basileir?
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs Everett?
Yes.
Counselor Midgetson?
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira?
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski?
Yes.
Counselor Tui?
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal?
Yes.
Counselor LePage?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
And President Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
And that passes.
Document forty-nine-G, ordinance regarding vehicles and traffic. Amend chapter two-forty. Be further amended by adding the following to section two, chapter two-forty, section eighty-five, Schedule B, parking restrictions and prohibitions. Location, Main Street, in front of Four-Ninety-Five Main Street. Two-hour parking for the hours of eight-thirty AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, January first through April thirtieth.
We have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Tui, second by Counselor Rogers. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
Document forty-nine-H, ordinance regarding vehicles and traffic. Amend chapter two-forty. Be further amended by deleting the following to chapter two-forty, section eighty-five, Schedule B, parking restrictions and prohibitions. River Street from twenty feet west of Washington Street to One-O-nine River Street. Time limit thirty minutes, seven AM to six PM. From One-O-nine to number two-eleven River Street, except for one twenty-four-hour handicap parking space at number one-sixty-three North Side. Time limited for two hours, seven AM to six PM. In front of One-Twenty-Five River Street, Victoria Ana Catering, time limited one hour, eight AM to four PM, Monday through Saturday. In front of number one-sixty-seven River Street, except for one twenty-four-hour handicap parking space, no parking, twenty-four hours. In front of One-Sixty-Nine to One-seventy-One River Street, no parking, twenty-four hours. From number two-eleven West, for two-hundred-and-ten feet North Side, time limited one hour, seven AM to five PM. Also, that chapter two-forty, section eighty-five, Schedule B, parking restrictions and prohibitions as amended, is further, is hereby further amended by adding the following. River Street from twenty feet west of Washington Street to across front of Sixty-seven River Street, time limit one hour, seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. In front of Eighty-three River Street, time limit one hour, seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. In front of One-Twenty-Five River Street, time limit one hour, nine AM to five PM, Monday through Saturday. In front of One-seventy-Five River Street, except for one twenty-four-hour handicap parking space, no parking, twenty-four hours. In front of Two-Nineteen River Street, time limited one hour, seven AM to five PM, filed October first of twenty-twenty-five.
Is there anyone here to speak on this? Is there anyone here about this? I can speak on this. I'm just asking if any of the residents are here? No. So, what, the reason this is before us is because there were some concerns by residents in that area of River Street. The nature of the street has changed over the last decade or so, since the last time we did these ordinance changes or parking changes. There's a lot more residential in this area now, and a lot less commercial in this area now. So, John Pettis and Sergeant Lynch, John Pettis, the engineer, Sergeant Lynch from the Police Department, went out. They reexamined all these locations and made a determination, based on feedback from the neighbors, that these changes would best reflect maximum parking space usage in that portion of River Street in the future. So, basically, that's why it's here before us tonight. I don't see any lights on or any questions. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve this?
So moved.
A motion by Vice President Jordan, a second by Counselor Rogers. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Vice President Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Basileir?
Yes.
Counselor Hobbs Everett?
Yes.
Counselor Midgetson?
Yes.
Counselor Ferreira?
Yes.
Counselor Lewandowski?
Yes.
Counselor Tui?
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal?
Yes.
Counselor LePage?
Yes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes.
And President Sullivan.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
And that passes. I think that's it.
That is it for this.
Are there any council committee reports or announcements to be made this evening?
Mr. President, I have an announcement of a public safety meeting tomorrow night, six o'clock, here at City Hall. I don't know, we're doing it in here or in the-
I think you'll be doing it right here.
Okay. I get the big chair.
Nice. The subject matter is-
We have two. We have one, talking about winter parking concerns and possible improvements to the, to the system we currently use. And secondly, from Counselor Ferreira, local strategies and safety, looking into intersections, Amesbury Line, and I think it's-
That's Counselor Lewandowski, actually, for the traffic improvements at Amesbury-
Okay, so they're different. Yeah, okay.
Amesbury Line, Merrimack Road, and then kind of a general discussion of-
Anything that happens, what's wrong on our memo. All right, yeah, so that's what we have. At six o'clock tomorrow, come there. It's very entertaining.
Counselor Basileir?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thirteen days ago, the students at the Learning Cafe here in City Hall had their annual spaghetti sauce cook-off, and it was a successful event that really brought City Hall together. And I won. After two weeks of talking crap, I am the reigning City Hall spaghetti sauce champion.
Thank you, Counselor. Vice President Jordan?